Welcome to the regular meeting, Morganton City Council, March 4, 2019. We normally have public comments. Kelly, has anyone signed up?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll move right into our agenda. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Forrest Fleming. If you'll please rise.
Join me if you will.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please be seated.
Next, we'll have the invocation given by Pastor Mike Chandler with Summit Church. Mike, if you'll come forward, please.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we're very blessed by you today. We're blessed to be in your presence. We're blessed to be here in a place to discuss a city that we're very passionate about, a county we're passionate about. And Father, I pray you bless what happens tonight, that every thought, every word, and every action we honor in you. We praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Mike. I'd like to introduce council to my far-right Wendy Cato, City Council, Forrest Fleming, City Council, Louie Vina, our City Attorney. I'm Ronnie Thompson, your mayor. Sally Sandy, City Manager. Sidney Simmons, City Council. Chris Hawkins could not be with us, a business engagement. We have Kattiri Resolution tonight. And Deborah Coleman, who's retired from the City of Morganton on March 1st, I'd like to read that resolution. Whereas Deborah Coleman was employed as a meter reader in the electric department on June 21st, 1999. And whereas Deborah M. Coleman has faithfully served the City of Morganton in the electric department and has given of her time and efforts for the benefit of the citizens of Morganton for 20 years. And whereas Deborah Coleman retired from the City of Morganton as meter reader in the electric department on March 1st, 2019. And whereas the Morganton City Council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Deborah Coleman and express their appreciation for a job well done, now therefore be it resolved by the City of Morganton that the mayor present this resolution to Deborah Coleman adopted this fourth day of March, 2019. Ronnie Thompson, Mayor. Sally Sandy, City Clerk. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second. So have a second. Any discussion? All in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Deborah's not with us. That's going to be presented to at a later time. We have service pins. Sally, you want to talk about the service pins, please?
Sure. In our efforts to recognize those employees that have 20 years or better with the City of Morganton, we have two of those tonight, and that is David Langley, the warehouse manager in finance, been with us for 20 years. And Gary Beam, the equipment operator, an equipment operator in public works, has been with us for 25 years. And neither of those employees were able to be here tonight, but we will make sure that they get those pins.
Thank you so much. Next on our agenda is our public advocacy issues and strategies. First will be the Burke County Home Builders Association presentation. I believe Stony Story, President of the Burke County Home Builders, is going to make a presentation. Stony, if you'll come forward, please.
First of all, thank you, Mayor Ronnie Thompson, and thank you to the council for allowing us to be here tonight for this presentation. We have, we have an award here that we would like to present. It is from the Western Piedmont Home Builders Association, which is the Burke County Association. It awards and recognizes Michael Croats.
All right, yay!
If you'll come forward.
We have a plaque here from our association in appreciation for your service and commitment to the organization and to the building industry. We thank you so much for all you do for us.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Mike, thank you.
Briefly, I would like to add what an inspiration and what a great leader and employee that Mike is for the City of Morganton and all he does for the City of Morganton, for the citizens of Burke County, keeping us safe and governing our inspections. Thank you.
Thank you, Stony.
Thank you, Stine.
We agree totally.
Next on our agenda is a presentation by World Changers. I think Mike Chandler, Justin Cunningham. Are you going to have help, Mike? Okay. They'll come forward, please. I think y'all've got some slides to show, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We're here to present about World Changers. Give you a little bit of history of what World Changers is. In 1990, there was a pilot project launched in Tennessee, Bryceville, Tennessee, with 135 students to launch, then a pilot project to see how it would go with this project called World Changers. It took off after that year, became a mission of North American Mission Board, and now Lifeway in Nashville, Tennessee through Southern Baptists. And what you saw in one pilot project back there near Memphis, Tennessee, began to be a reality in 1997 with the whole Southern Baptist Convention. That movement, that project called World Changers now has grown to, this summer will be, 42 projects across the United States and into Puerto Rico. We're very big on construction, big on doing, helping people and communities of what they need, when they need it, how they need it. And we share the gospel, the gospel of Christ. I will not be ashamed to tell you that. That's who I am, who we are. And we share that to pray with these people. We share partnership with local churches, partner with us to come alongside of us to follow up after we're done and finished. Locally, Jonathan Puckett and myself and Justin Cunningham, we had a corporate decision to bring this to Morganton. And so we felt as if, we felt as if it was time for us to put in a application to bring it to Morganton. I grew up here. Jonathan has lived here for most of his life, not all your life?
Half of my life.
Half your life.
Not that it's that long.
You're not that old. Half your life is good.
The best half.
Yes.
Justin has been here since he was a schoolteacher at Oak Hill Elementary and now working at El Bethel Baptist Church. We've been involved with World Changers for a long time, and we totally believe in Morganton. When I moved back in 2008, I was very moved and passionate about my city, and we still are. And we were very touched by this ministry. I began getting involved with them in 1997 through World Changers, taking students as a student pastor, going on trips. And I saw what it does for our students. I saw what it does for the residents, and it moved me. It empowered me as an adult to see this happening, where kids were grabbing hammers who were normally in front of a TV. They're nailing nails and roofing and painting and decking and all these things in a positive manner in these communities. And so it moved me. And so I was very passionate about this. And so in 2004, they offered leadership. I began doing leadership with them in 2004. I've been in, been in Puerto Rico, been in all across Appalachia region, Kentucky, Tennessee, all across the state of North Carolina, South Carolina where I lived for 12 years prior to coming back in '08. I've been in New Orleans after Katrina, helping with disaster relief through World Changers, partnering with Habitat for Humanity. Been several places. Jonathan has been with groups leading across different states with different youth groups and groups, organizations. Justin as well. And so bringing all that together, we were passionate about what's happening here in Morganton. Summer, pay to come, sleep on the floor, eat cafeteria food, eat lunch through a bag or a lunch on job site in the hot sun, and basically worship at night and work. Yes, that's the big word, work. And they come, and they volunteer, and they serve, and they're glad to do it. So much so that this summer, we stayed the last two years, we were in our second year at Patton High School, partnership with the county schools, by the way, thank you very much to them. We pay our way, we pay to come, and we pay the schools to stay there. And so this year, we have 217 participants coming to Morganton.
258.
Pardon me. Okay, I had looked today.
258.
We were supposed to max at 250.
Yes, we are.
Wow, okay. And so it's grown. And so now we're looking at 258 participants coming to Morganton. And so we've been working here for the past four years, it's our fourth year now, seeing change happening. And so we're very excited to bring it to you and talk about what is possible, what can happen, and what's taking place. We basically work with students and adults to change communities. And so when I was in Aiken, South Carolina, we worked through some CDBG monies and other things. And people say government and church can't work together. Well, I disagree. Because when we came forward saying we offer free labor, we worked together great. We had a great partnership. So we stretched that money in massive ways, and we were able to target certain communities in our cities and make a difference. We want to show you through a few slides what's possible, what can happen. So this is a before and after shot of a house that was completed by World Changers. And then this is a, this is a local ramp we built through, through Park City One. And so they're all through Foothill Service Project with all the ramps we build. We're able to do ramps, decking, painting, weatherization, some interior work when it's pre-approved. Anything that we see doable, we can make it happen. Here's a before and after shot of a house that needed some repairs on the outside. So we are very passionate about this, and what you see taking place there happens here in Morganton every summer. And we just want to talk to the City of Morganton saying, we'd love to partner with you. We'd love to, right as it stands right now, we don't mind this, but it's where we got to do. We max out Foothill Service Project. If you can imagine, with 258 participants, that's about 26 job sites. We'll knock out about 30 jobs this summer. And so they're getting grant money to pay off ramps six months in advance. So we get them called up way ahead of schedule, but we need some other monies and helps. And what we'd love to do is partner with the City of Morganton. And we want to make sure, like right now, we're having to go to Catawba County and Caldwell County because we can't find enough work in Burke County because of the ramp situation with foothills. And so we just know to, we want to make a difference in our city limits, because it's right where we are. Our church is right down the street. We're right in this whole community together. We want to partner together and see this happen. And so we want to tell you what we do, what is possible, how passionate we are, and the changes we see made in cities where we work and in our lives as well as they come and participate with us. And they go back to their own hometowns and make a difference as well. It continues on.
Mike, how could somebody get in touch with you if they wanted to donate? Is there a number?
We have an admission statement here, serving others and sharing the gospel, and then for more information, a website right here.
As far as donation, that would be up to, I guess, because Mike is the project coordinator, so I guess that would be up to you to set up.
Yes.
How would we do that?
We don't have a slide for that per se, but they can call me at my church office, Summit Community Church. We can get them in touch with the right people to make a donation, a charitable donation. And pretty much, local donations run through us, and it's a charitable taxable deduction to us, and we'll fund it straight to World Changers to help offset costs for what we do. So you can contact Summit Community Church at 828-437-2761, and we'll line it up for them.
What dates will they be in town?
They will be here, let's go back to July, 15th. So they'll come in on Monday, and they'll work Tuesday through Friday, and then they'll head home on Saturday. And just a little bit on the construction side of it, that's what I'm in charge of, if you will. And pretty much what we do is we funnel the work through us, whether it's, you know, a lot of things we do are ramps, because that's just where we get the funding for. We do siding, painting, roofing, as long as they're over 16. And, and, you know, we just need work. And when we met a couple weeks ago, we said, you know, here we are coming with, you know, a labor force of 200-plus teenagers to say, we need work, you know. We just need stuff for them to do. And, you know, there is a structure behind it. We have crew chiefs and supervisors and stuff, so we're not just sending, you know, middle school and high schoolers to a job site and say, here, go do this, you know. So there is a structure behind the leadership side of it, but it does, does make a difference in the community.
That is a major part of what we do, because it's all supervised with contractors and construction people who supervise the work, so they make sure it's done well and done according to standards.
If I, a question, are you limited to residential work?
Wherever, wherever there's a need, as in, there are some criteria within the World Changers, you know, umbrella. You know, it can't be renters unless there's, you know, there can't be a renter that needs it unless the homeowner can't provide it. Not saying that we couldn't do it for a renter, but if the homeowner, you know, has the money, just doesn't want to do it, then that's kind of where there's a little bit of.
Let me phrase that a kind way. We don't want to make a landlord who's rich any richer.
Yeah.
We want to help people with a need. So that's, but we will not hesitate. If there's a need in a rental that is a viable need, where they're desperate for something, we will not hesitate to meet that need. But it's preferably persons who own their home or in the process of owning their home that we'd like to help, because that's just why we, we will not turn down a need.
Do you work with Blue Ridge Community Action, because they do have funding for small home repairs and things like that? Do you work with them at all?
We have in the past.
Have it in the past.
But they do have funding for, for that, that purpose. You have the manpower and they have the funding, so.
That'd be a good option. We'll check with them. We've checked locally with some other organizations. We'll put them on the list, and we're just, we just want to partner.
Yeah.
So.
Mike, thank you so much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is a resolution in support of a statewide initiative for legislative funding to reestablish a passenger rail connection for western North Carolina. I'd like to read that resolution. Whereas rail service is an integral part of a comprehensive transportation system for the state of North Carolina, and whereas economic development, tourism, and job creation will benefit through the enhancement of a passenger rail and bus system that serves the citizens of North Carolina and visitors to our state. And whereas the North Carolina Department of Transportation Rail Division has agreed to manage, subject to the North Carolina legislative appropriation, contract development and implementation of Amtrak throughway bus service between Salisbury and Asheville, similar to the successful Amtrak throughway bus rail service in eastern North Carolina that was intended to be an extended comprehensive bus rail system to serve western North Carolina. That includes sufficient funding by the North Carolina General Assembly to the North Carolina Department of Transportation Rail Division for the proposed Amway throughway, Amtrak throughway bus service between Asheville and Salisbury. This service will be evaluated after two years by Amtrak, the North Carolina Department of Transportation Rail Division, the Western North Carolina Rail Committee Incorporated, and the community served by the Salisbury-Ashville Bus Rail Connection. Do I have a motion to accept this resolution?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor of the resolution, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Okay, next on our agenda is public advocacy, upcoming events, I believe, under comma. Under comma, we have Peter Pan and the Friends on Ice Tuesday, March 12th at 7:30. We have the Jersey Boys Thursday, March 21st at 7:30. We have Traveling Down an Irish Road with Switchback on Tuesday, March 26th at 7:30. And an evening with Alberta Hall on Saturday, March 30th at 7:30. For downtown Morganton, we have the ACC Chili Cookoff on Thursday, March 14th, 11:00 a.m. to 1:30 at the Community House. We have St. Patrick's Day FAB crawl on Saturday, March 16th, all day, please wear your green. And on Farmer's Market pop-up Saturday, March 16th, from 9:00 to 1:00 on North Green Street. Okay, next on our agenda is North Carolina Municipal Power Agency. Sally?
No report at this time.
Next, we have a consent agenda. I believe we have nine items.
We do, nine items, and would ask that you consider those in a single motion. Of course, we can always remove something and discuss it separately. For those of you viewing at home, those nine items include minutes from the regular council meeting and a closed session held on February the 4th, tax releases in the amount of $104.40, a series of budget amendments, $23,827 in public work sanitation for insurance funds received to replace equipment, a transfer from our CDBG fund to our general fund for some work being done in Green Street revitalization area, $42,109. The budget amendment for Main Street to receive $2,000 from a private contributor and the Downtown Development Association to fund some travel for the National Main Street Conference. A budget amendment for the Community House in the amount of $3,880, also an insurance reimbursement. Then the ever-popular participation extension for the 2019-2020 urban archery season for that, that month between January and February, when hunters that meet certain requirements and have permission can do bow hunting in the city, managed by Public Safety. Then set the date for our advertisement of unpaid real estate taxes, which will be April 3rd, 2019. And then the annual renewal and revision of our standards and specifications, engineering standards and specifications for paving, curb and gutter, and water and sewer line extensions and repairs.
Do any members of council wish to have anything removed from the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Ask a question.
You can ask a question.
I don't want to pull anything off the agenda. I'd just like to ask a question about number 10, or make a comment.
Okay, what's, what is that, Forrest?
I've noticed that by looking, pretty considerable, is it not? Is that, is that normal for this time of year in the tax collection?
Yes, we are running, I don't know if our report is in front of us, but we're running pretty even with how we were collecting percentage-wise last year. I'm looking at our reports that are before us, and it may not be before you yet, because we may not have received that. It's early in the month, because they have to close out. But if you look at last month, I believe we're like three tenths of a percentage different from our collections last year.
It's five and a half percent to be collected.
So last year at this time, we were at 94.06, and now we're at 94.49 percent. We're running a little bit ahead of where we were last year at this time.
So you're saying it's pretty normal for this time of year?
Yeah, it's better than last year.
Yeah, after, yeah, so after the advertisement, then we, you know, we will actually start garnishing accounts and things for the unpaid real estate taxes.
Okay. I'm over approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Our first item of new business is the entering into an audit contract with Elliot Davis. Sally?
You will recall that we just completed year three of our original three-year contract with Elliot Davis. They have really been very, very good auditors and continue to be very well respected for their audit, governmental audit business in the state of North Carolina. And I will just tell you that auditors that do governmental business in the state of North Carolina are becoming few and far between. It requires a lot of training and a lot, lot of hours dedicated to that. All the auditors that can do that kind of work in North Carolina have to be approved by the local government commission, as do any of our audit contracts, and that list is getting short. Elliot Davis has told us that they would like to renew a contract. They are really giving us the amount for 2018-19, which would be $38,500. The four years after that, they are willing to commit to these amounts as not to exceed amounts. And you'll see that they're only going up $500 and then $750 each year, very reasonable. And we feel really good about them being willing to extend this for a five-year period.
Well, I think Sally, it's because when they do come to audit, they have what they need to be able to audit our books. So their time commitment is, is more limited perhaps with other municipalities, so. They're able to do that.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to award an audit contract to Elliot Davis.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Next on our agenda is the consideration of license and encroachment agreement between the City of Morganton and MMI Atlantic LLC. Sally?
MMI Atlantic LLC is a company that is licensed to do business in North Carolina, and they are actually a contractor that extends fiber optic cable, fiber communications infrastructure. And they may be doing that on their behalf, or they may be doing that on behalf of some other company. They can do both. This agreement allows us, or requires them, I think is a better way to put it, to actually notify the city when they are working in the city, when they are working within the, the public right-of-way. Puts us on notice, so if they are disturbing the infrastructure that we have put in place, we can require them to replace that in a manner in which they found it. This is kind of standard with, with contractors in this business. We like to know when they're coming into town and doing that business. You'll recall sometime back, there was a contractor that did some work for DOT in our downtown, and a lot of our islands and things were really destroyed. And they were not replaced back in a manner in which they had been found. And so we have to go through the process to deal with that. This will allow us to be on notification. I also know that there have been several questions that you all have gotten. Is this someone that we're allowing to come into the community and compete with Compass? The reality is, is that we have no legal authority to be able to stop anyone from coming in and competing. As a matter of fact, Compass is in competition every day with other providers that are already here. But that's where this is. We believe this is a good thing. You'll see that either party can terminate this agreement with a 60-day notice. And I believe this is a five-year.
Yeah, for a period of five years.
For a period of five years. And you see on Exhibit A, the roads, which are largely state roads, not all, but some of them state roads that run through.
Cross the horizon, City Manager, to execute a license and encroachment agreement between the City of Morganton and MMI Atlantic LLC for the purpose of installation of fiber optic cable within the various city limits right-of-way.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm not trying to dominate the meeting tonight by asking questions, but I've had, I've got a few. Actually, this is an encroachment agreement, and they're running their fiber optic cable through parts of the city. What does the city get out of this? Do we get anything out of the fact that they're running their cable? I guess my next question is, why not, then? Because it, it seems to me to be an encroachment.
Well, it is, it is an encroachment. They're using the public right-of-way, and they are a public utility using the public right-of-way. Of course, what we get out of this is control over where and when and how they do that work. Because as Sally pointed out, that, that has been a problem with tearing up our sidewalks. This guarantees that they, first of all, they have to tell us first, so we know when and where they're working and give us ample notice of that. If there is any concern by the city that the place that they want to put it would, would disrupt an existing utility there, water, sewer, power, gas, whatever, then we won't approve it. And that gives us that, that's the most important thing, because that has been the biggest problem with these fiber optic or any other utility is interrupt, disturbing the existing utilities or disturbing our street or sidewalk and not getting it properly repaired. And since this is all on state highway right-of-way, frankly, the routes that are covered by this, it's not really something that interferes with anything that the city or the DOT would do. I guess that's the short answer.
I guess what made me think about the question was if the city was, chose to run lines through some other folks' streets or property, then we'd probably have to pay a fee. But these folks don't have to pay a fee.
Well, as would they if they went through private property.
This is a public right-of-way.
And may I add, the other thing is, if you'll notice from the map, the course is basically following the course of US 64 through the city from north to south, or south to north, depending on how you go, which means that the main purpose of this encroachment agreement is to put in fiber that is going to serve areas either to our north or our south, outside the city. So this is really enabling whoever the provider is to serve areas in presumably rural Burke County or maybe in Caldwell County, I don't know, that are not presently served by whoever this provider is, which will hopefully increase the availability of, of high-speed internet to somebody in our region.
And the difference, I, I think, is the public right-of-way versus private property. If, if this weren't in the public right-of-way, then there may be some fees involved.
There would be.
Other questions, Forrest?
I guess not. Not that I totally agree with this.
Okay.
Because if, I feel. Because if, I, I feel sure that if the city was doing this, then somebody would want a fee out of us to, but carry on.
Okay. Any is the consideration of rescinding an economic development agreement for Project Copy. I'll call on our city attorney, Louis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is something that I just felt we needed to do to clear up the record. As you'll recall, we approved last fall, city council did, this economic grant, development grant agreement with a company we called Project Copy. It was then supposed to go to, this is one of those city-county agreements, was supposed to go to the county for their approval. Before the county approved it, the company decided to change its plans a bit, in some way, significantly, I shouldn't say, I should say not a bit. And so the county never approved it because they realized there was going to be a change. BDI has worked on this, is still working with the company, and I certainly anticipate that they will be coming before us at some point and asking, presenting a different plan. But that means we'll have to adopt a different economic development agreement. And since the city, but nobody else, had approved the previous agreement, to clear the record, we need to rescind that and make sure we're, we're starting from a clean slate, and that's the purpose of this.
What's the wish of council?
Move to rescind that economic development grant agreement for Project Copy.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda are some mayoral appointments for the Morganton Housing Authority. We currently have two vacancies on the housing authority board, and one term is expiring. I am reappointing Adriana Morris to the Morganton Housing Authority Board for a term to expire February first, two thousand and twenty-four. I want to appoint Marcia Peterson to fulfill a term to expire on February first, two thousand and twenty, and appoint Lieutenant Brad Buchanan to fulfill a term to expire on February first, two thousand and twenty-two. Do we have any further business come before the council? If not, we're adjourned.
I called this afternoon on it. I had.